All right, I'm going to call to order the Murfreesboro City Council Regular Meeting. We're here at the airport Business Center, February 8th. I will handle our prayer and our pledge, so feel valued with us.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity that we have to be here. Lord, I pray for those things that are spoken and unspoken, for the blessings that we have in our community. Lord, I pray for our staff, pray that you give them guidance and you give them wisdom, pray for their families, for the time that they spend away from them and the hard work that they give to this city. Lord, give us the ability to be able to make decisions that will not only be fitting to the residents of Murfreesboro, but fitting to you. In Jesus' name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
ARPA Fund allocation.
We are requesting $3.02 million in ARPA funds to be approved for three park improvement projects. These include $270,000 to cover the increased cost of ball field and parking improvements at Old Fort Park, 1.35 million for renovations to the outdoor tennis courts at Old Fort Park, and then 1.4 million for outdoor improvements to the Patterson Park campus, which would include a new playground development, pavilion, and court lights. These funds are part of the $3.5 million that was previously approved by council in the ARPA spending plan. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Motion second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skiles-Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McCarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to Architectural Services Amendment for the Murfreesboro Water Authority Administration building.
Mayor, council, thank you. One, two, this is an amendment to an architectural services agreement that we have with KDGI. The area highlighted in blue is the new admin building for water resources where we anticipate moving hopefully by the end of the year. That original contractor for $72,000. As you can kind of see, the new Gateway Boulevard is coming in at the property adjacent, and the area in yellow is looking to be incorporated into the campus or the parking area that we have for the new admin building. So with that, it puts us into a whole new level of design and planning commission and Gateway Commission approval and meeting the GDO requirements. So we're asking for an additional $22,843 in order to accommodate those services. So I'm available for questions if you have any.
Sir?
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skiles-Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCarland?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McCarland?
All right, we'll move to the downtown parking study. Mr. Herr.
Mayor, members of the council appreciate the opportunity. April of 2022, an update was provided to City Council to present the preliminary findings of the downtown parking. The purpose of this study was to help the city understand current parking needs to help staff plan for future development in the downtown area. Since the last update, Neil Schaefer has provided the final deliverables with short to long-term recommendations. Staff has requested Neil Schaefer to present these findings and recommendations for your consideration. Greg Judy with Neil Schaefer will provide information about the study and answer questions as they come about.
Mayor, council, it's good to be back before you. It's been a few months and good to see you. And those that are new to do the council, my name is Greg Judy. I'm vice president and engineer manager with Neil Schaefer. Get this screen in. So I guess before we just little preface to give you some background, so the two things that I would want to mention first is just want to thank all those involved, especially on the staff and in the community. You'll see in a minute, we had quite a public outreach effort, but also meetings and discussion and input from all the city staff. So we really appreciate, it's a little unique that we had involvement from four different departments of the city, so that was good to be able to handle it that way. The second is there's a ton of information that was used and looked at and reviewed and prepared for this, and we really won't do it, have time to do it justice today, but what we hope to accomplish is just to give you all a insight and maybe even a preview as to what might be happening in the future. One of the things that we've said through this process, this might be more of a beginning than an end, because there's short-term, midterm, long-term initiatives that could come out of this, and that's really what we want to focus on today. So as far as the area we're talking about, it's highlighted in yellow there, and as you'd imagine, it's just the greater downtown area. Just looked at parking needs, as Jim said, and initiatives to manage that going forward. As a recap, we presented this earlier, but again, obviously there was a fair amount of data collection and field observations made, and items such as parking inventory and the turnover and occupancy type of information was used to kind of get a sense of kind of where we were today and what that might mean in terms of, again, the initiatives and action items. Again, I do want to stress, you know, the amount of outreach and involvement, our friends over at Main Street Murfreesboro were incredibly helpful in the outreach. We actually had four opportunities where Zoom meetings were held with selection of property owners, business owners in the downtown to provide that input. Of course, we mentioned the staff and both at the city and county levels, and a Survey Monkey-type web-based survey was also. So we got a lot of good input and a lot of what you're going to be seeing today as far as outcomes and information, really, this interview process and information that we had was really an impetus to that. As Jim again mentioned when he was up at the podium here earlier, we actually got contract and kind of kicked off in late '21, but the majority of the work got started after the first year, about a year ago from this month, and provided a briefing update both to this body as well as the planning commission in the spring, and we actually had some outreach and interaction with the county as well during the early summer, late spring as well, to give them an update on basically some of the same information. So again, we're going to run through some of these slides, and we'll be happy to answer questions at the end and continue to discussion even after today, but I guess some of the takeaways and strategies is to formulate kind of where the group and the team felt we were headed. I want to touch on just a few of these, and then we might circle back around later, but wayfinding program and those kind of issues were very prominently discussed as far as being able to manage the parking that is available now and then being able to get that information out to the citizens and the visitors that come downtown for all the different events and activities, both from like pre, pre-visit, you know, web-based or information that's out there before they even begin their trip, to the information that could be useful during the course of the trip. Looked to spend a lot of time looking at existing parking time limits and availability and their locations, and also issues related to how employees of the businesses downtown interact with the spaces and how that interacts with the customers' needs, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Again, issues in terms of potential opportunities for increasing availability in the future, as well as the issue of on-street paid parking and other programs that might be advantageous going forward. So spend a few minutes here talking about improved wayfinding. I won't read through all the bullet lists, but there's a lot of information and detail and research that was done that the team looked at, and there's a variety of reasons and mechanics that go through. I think the message is creating a consistent message, a recognizable message that could be, you know, viewed and understood by as drivers and folks come downtown to help streamline and educate the public as they try to find the available parking and do that in a safe and efficient manner. So I think there's a lot to be done. There's a lot of discussion and outcome from a wayfinding and signage standpoint, and I think that's definitely some low-hanging fruit that could be pursued. Again, under the genre of making parking easier to find, developing these what we call public-facing resources that would be pre-trip type information, this could be in the, from the standpoint of information that's on the city's website, it could be even on a business websites or, you know, again, downtown Murfreesboro, the business groups, to interlace that with, you know, web-based and mobile devices to help aid drivers and folks in the downtown to find those spaces. So again, it's all about just making that more prominent and providing that information in an easily touched way. One issue that rose, was lifted up a lot, not just from our observations, but also in discussions with community members and business owners downtown, was this kind of back and forth related to patrons' needs of having parking spaces in a meaningful and kind of close format to get to where they're doing their business and visiting, but also how that interrelates with the employee folks that work there. So what we found was that there was, again, comments that in cases there were some employees that might have been parking close in proximity to the places that they worked, but that might be taking up spaces that would be available for customers and whatnot. How do we manage that? And that's, again, some of these bullet points and some of the action items that we'll get to in a second to try to address that issue. There was also good discussion and input from, again, from the outreach that we did related to the potential of creating more short-term type parking, expanding like 30-minute, 15-minute type available parking to help with that turnover and making those spaces available in the interest of the customers that are frequenting the businesses around the square and from the downtown. So again, something that is a good tactic to use and it's something that the city may well, you know, look at pursuing. The issue related to on-street parking, just say it off the front here, that it's, you know, it can be kind of a touchy subject, and different people have different ideas about that, but it is something that the group looked at, and based on some of the surveys, that was one of the questions in the surveys that was provided, and doing the math, about 60% were open to that idea as far as, you know, what that means in particulars and specifics is something that will need to be worked through and discussed, but there's still definitely, as the downtown area continues to evolve and more multi-use type land uses come along and available, that that's something that can be looked at. And then as, you know, there's some desire and intent to, you know, look at increasing, you know, obviously the residential population of downtown, so what does that mean in terms to trying to organize and create some process and procedures for that? So there's some examples that were looked at from some peer, not just Roanoke, but other communities that really have some type of organization to that and what that looks like, so continuing to evolve. So a lot of information on this table, but what I would just call your attention to is, you know, across the first row at the top in the bold or white, you know, those are, these are some of the aspects and features that were looked at as it relates to the parking facilities as they exist today and looking at short, midterm, long-term improvements. And so it's kind of the starting point, but we evolved that into more organized, you know, one of the challenges that we had was the amount of information and the amount of different topics that we were trying to dive into, you know, it's important for us to, as a group, present that in an organized and meaningful way to provide some momentum going forward to the city chooses to pursue some of these different action items. So as typically done, we wanted to try to prioritize these into short, midterm, long-term improvements. So at the end of the day, what we're trying to get at is really, we've kind of categorized these in the two, kind of two different ways of looking at them. There's dashboards and there's action plans, and the dashboards are trying to become more of a methodical, organized way to present areas of the downtown, different parking areas in the downtown of kind of going through, you know, some of the recommendations and ways to pursue that, and the action plans could be more initiatives and scenarios of things that the council and staff could look at doing. So in all, there are probably about 10 or so dashboards and five or so different action plans. We're just going to highlight a few, and just so you can get a sense of what the structure is and the organization of the information. So for each of these different elements, in this case, the sitting parking garage, the dashboard presents some basic information on the left-hand side with some of the, you know, different down details and factors related to that, and then you go into, again, a table that presents the short-term, midterm, long-term improvements. Some, again, more of the low-hanging, you know, security is always a concern. What we found as it relates to the city parking garage there at City Hall was it's underutilized, and what ways could we make that more prominent? What ways could we make that more attractive to folks to be able to use the garage and then just, you know, walk within one or two blocks to their final destination? So there's issues that we looked at, and those are kind of on the left. One thing was more of a long-term strategy, you know, are there opportunities from an architectural or even security standpoint to make that interaction between the way folks enter and leave, not just from a vehicle standpoint, but from a pedestrian standpoint, to supposedly using some of the steps there now to get up on the, I guess it would be the north and west side of the building, to make that more attractive, more inviting? And so again, that's something that I think could be looked at, and it was kind of well-received, you know, through the group. Again, so again, some concepts, and so these actually, these dashboards end with different specific talking points and action items that could be carried forward and looked at as kind of a piecemeal and kind of strategy standpoint. Wanted to bring this example up, the East Main Church of Christ, you know, parking lot that's just to the east of the square. This one was interesting because in our interviews with some of the leadership at the church, they were open to the idea of partnering with the city, and, you know, just like we talked with mixed-use developments and shared parking, you know, there's times of the day, obviously, you know, Sunday, Wednesdays, when obviously that parking is needed at the church, but there are other times that that could be available. So what we're trying to do is look at ways to maximize and create some efficiency when it comes to available parking. So again, the same kind of dashboard was set up, and, you know, there is an opportunity for the city to, not just this church, others in the downtown area to potentially, you know, have that conversation. And then finally, just wanted to again touch on the on-street paid parking. You know, there's a few pockets of some app-based. Honestly, there was one on, I guess on the west side of the square, I think on Walnut, that I wasn't even aware of when we started the project, but I think there's another out there on Maple now too, where there's, there is some precedent for infancy stage, if you will, of having some app-based type parking based on demand and duration and so forth. So how does that look going forward? And so the study looked at some options and some scenarios to what that might look like. Again, there's a lot of options on the table, and it could change and evolve over time, so it's not necessarily how it looks now may be different than it looks, you know, five to 10 years from now. So again, there's just some information in here discussing about, you know, some initiatives and some potential actions along those lines as it relates to that. So apologize for, you know, going through that fairly quickly, but like I said, there was a lot of information, but wanted to give you all a sense of kind of what was included and some of the direction that was, came out of that. So again, if there are any questions or any comments, I'd be happy to, happy to take those, and I'm sure the conversation will continue as we go forward. So mayor, I appreciate the time. Councilwoman?
Yes. On page 11, saying the shorter limit with enforcement would deter employees from parking there all day. In your study or in your conversations, did you think about maybe that the employees have some type of identification in their cars so we would know who is an employee, like handicap or whatever?
Right, right. Well, I think the main issue was related to the employee parking and as it relates to the patrons and the customer parking was that, you know, any given business that has obviously a storefront there on the square or even surrounding business, there was comments that we received back that employees were parking in front of and are just adjacent to their own business, and how that, you know, from the employee perspective, you know, they, I think some of the comments where they had challenges in finding the parking, you know, where they would like to park, you know, that's always kind of the rub. Now, as far as how that's handled and as far as some kind of tag program, that definitely could be something that they looked at. I think a lot is just organization and having some consistency, you know, and potentially some partnership and discussion, cooperation between both the city and the business community downtown could probably come up with. I think right now is just more identifying that, let's just get it out there, let's just put it out there, let's not hide, you know, and be worried about talking about it as far as, you know, some of the, I don't want to remain conflicts, but just the interaction between the employee parking and the patron parking and trying to figure out a way to maybe better manage, better manage that.
Yeah, I know if I had a business there, that would be very tempting to leave the park as close as I could.
So over the varying levels, I don't want to give the connotation that it was a severe problem, but as you can imagine, it was something that from business, from the owner's standpoint, the high turnover and wanting to make those spaces available, and that's where that concept of having expanded shorter duration parking to help with that some. But like I said, there's probably multiple options that be looked at to try to help. And again, as an employee, knowing where you do have option and knowing that space will always be there, or at least that area will be available for you as opposed to, I'm sure in a lot of cases now, employees might come downtown and, where am I going to park today? And then trying to work, just trying to work through that to help with, so there's some confidence and, you know, dependability that there's not going to be an issue with that, both from both the employee and the customer standpoint.
Is there a way, any of us who have businesses downtown, you know, my client's original business location was in Dr. Adams' space on Church Street, and, I mean, 12 years ago, I was having to do, I called it the two-hour tango where I would go move my car to a different spot.
Heard a lot, yep. We heard a lot about that.
Every two hours. So I didn't get a ticket. And now with the location of my business, we have 21 spots for our business, and so I've had to go secure and pay for off-site parking just for the employees in our business. And so we don't allow any employees to park in front of our, the 21 spots that we have at our business. No employees can park there. That's for customers only. So in this recommendation, part of it's going to have to be with the business owners and I think also with government, us included, because downtown you can go down, I mean, I drove downtown this morning after the WGNS radio show, and there's, I think I counted seven county trucks that were parked in front of the planning department. And so can we come up with some plan or collaboration to where, with the county, the city government, but also with the downtown employees that we have a lot that we can somehow monitor that's just for employees? And then the downtown owners can in turn say, okay, look, for example, Woods Viking Shop, you cannot park in these spots around the square as employees. You've got to go to these spots.
Yeah, it's a great observation, and I appreciate you bringing up the point about every two hours. We did hear stories of employees that are doing, having to do that now. I think where the conversation went during the process, particularly toward the tail end of when we were kind of formulating, you know, action plans and such, is the idea is to push and have the longer-term parking. The employees are going to be there for a number of hours over the course of the whole day to areas that a little bit further out, so maybe some of these areas like maybe the church parking lots, or again, making the city garage more accessible and inviting so they, again, have that confidence so that the customers do have more prominent parking closer to the business that they're, but again, it goes back to getting that information out, having a structured process and plan in place to make that feasible and known both on both sides so that they have confidence before they even leave, getting in their vehicle to come downtown, they know some expectation of what they can find.
Right, but we're going to have, I mean, I think it'd be great to see a study or see some kind of plan that would be implemented that says this is for downtown employee parking, but then at the same time, we're going to have to come up with a plan. You know, the majority of people that are in my office are all ladies, and when the winter months hit, you know, it was easy to say, let go park in the county parking garage, but when the winter months hit, one, when it's cold, but two, when it's dark, and some of the issues that we've had downtown with homelessness and vagrancy, they don't feel comfortable walking to the parking garage. So it may have to be something where we set up some kind of program to provide that security during those months to be able to have someone that, you know, walks back and forth during the night or during closing a business to be able to help make sure people are secure walking back and forth.
Security did come up quite a bit, first cameras and, or even having physical presence or just patrols and whatnot.
Cameras are great after the fact, because if they're not great, I mean, if you're getting robbed, you can go back and be thankful that a camera is there to watch you get robbed, but it'd be a whole lot better to have somebody there preventing that from happening. So I think we have to show value to our downtown owners that, yes, we are asking you to go park in the city parking garage where it's only at 60% vacancy, but we're going to protect you going back and forth to be able to do that, whether that means a shuttle service, I mean, Rover maybe having to stop during the winter months to pick people up and shuttle them around, but there's got to be a way we can figure it out.
Anything's on the table, but I'd like to, you know, ideas and options on how to handle that, absolutely.
And, I'm sorry. What's the next step? Yeah. What do you reckon?
Maybe as far as the staff, I mean, let Jim or Sam answer that, but I mean, I think the idea is that those kind of tools and options and ideas are out there, and I think at this point, maybe looking at what options, you know, rise to the top with the pleasure of the council and staff is, and just kind of going from there, but I don't know if you want to speak to that or not.
Hey, good afternoon, mayor, members of the council. I think our ask of the council today is a little bit of feedback, certainly next steps for us is to look for that low-hanging fruit. So short-term action plans, really, we need to put some legs on that, some funding and some action to move some of those forward. There's some easy things we can do that really doesn't compromise anybody's ability to park today. For example, wayfinding. I think, I think we should probably seek a wayfinding program and fund that, and that would be an item that staff would bring to you in the next few weeks for funding and action. Some of the other changes that we talked about that are, again, some low-hanging fruit, when you look at areas like the City Hall parking garage, and it's very low utilization today, and what we understood from the feedback from the stakeholders about why that is not utilized, sometimes it's knowledge, sometimes it's information, sometimes it's that sense of security. The parking garage, for those of us who frequent it all the time, is not a challenge, but if you're standing on Vine Street or you're coming in and out on Vine Street, there's really not very good information to mark those routes and maybe even some physical improvements. You know, the character of the downtown has changed, some of the challenges we have have changed, and so probably looking at a proposal that we'd like to bring back to you on the City Hall parking garage with some recommendations for improvements on it to increase its level of utilization. There are some very easy low-hanging fruit that we'd like to bring back to you. We wanted to get this back in front of you. I know it's an ongoing topic of discussion with our downtown stakeholders and business owners, and we thought it was a good time to bring it back to you for that consideration. Any thoughts that you have on some short-term areas of focus would be helpful as well. The longer-term stuff, expanding parking garages, you know, that's a, that's a community investment program, funding question. It's also driven by changes in parking demand downtown. As we see that parking demand grow, we'll need to be planning and preparing for that.
Sam, I saw an RFP for a wayfinding master plan that someone had prepared, came through Main Street. I really think, you know, looking at that so that we, I mean, just fundamental things like branding, so that people know what to look for for direction, you know, some kind of consistency as far as how and how do you navigate the downtown? Where is parking for the public available and stuff like that? So I think, I think if we had a master plan for wayfinding, it would help us identify those areas that we're, that we want public parking in, and then we can address these other things as well. But I think the low-hanging fruit for me is to get something that is consistent, how we're going to tell people, how you're going to
we're going to tell people, how you're going to navigate the downtown. So, the wayfinding, it's not just parking. Some of it is city offices, some of it is the public library, some of it is these other areas that normally people are trying to get to in our downtown. And it's a long time coming, but it sure needs to get there right, as quickly as possible to navigate the downtown.
I think it's a great point, Vice Mayor. And I think about what we ask people about ideas and things is, you know, what works in other areas. And I would ask us that when we go to a different community or a different downtown area. If you were headed into downtown Nashville today, if you didn't think about where you were going and how you were going to park and how much that might cost you and what your needs were, you won't find out that you thought about it too late by the time you arrive at downtown. And so, I think having that information available to the, to the public, especially those occasional visitors. The business owners and the employees who are visiting downtown every day, they know their way around. They know where the parking resources are. They know the ebb and flow of parking demand and vacancies and utilization. But an occasional visitor or a once occasional visitor, they may not. And so, we, we need to be able to cover all of those spectrums of our, of our parking demand. So, I think one of the things that we'll be bringing back to you in pretty short order would be a, a plan on that wayfinding. And I think also we'll, we'll work on a, an approach and a proposal, look at the City Hall parking garage just for some of those enhancements that were, that were listed in there, some low-hanging fruit.
It would be nice for the council, just one opinion. Being downtown, it's almost like you're parking police half the time. My tenants hate, when I send them a text and be like, "Hey, so-and-so employee's parked in the, in the spot." And typically, I find that out because one of the other businesses in our building has complained to me that they're not following the rules. If we can come up, and I know Sarah's here with Main Street, if we can come up with some kind of plan that all the business owners downtown would sort of agree to, I guarantee you they'll police one another. If, if one lawyer's office sees the other lawyer's office employees parking there, I mean, they will, they will turn into policing themselves. But a guy was joking with me the other day, he had, I'm not going to tell, Sean and Jamie will know who this, this guy is, but he was messaging me, asking how many people rode, how many trips we had on Rover last year. And I think, Jim, that number was like, what was it, 100?
About 110,000.
110,000. And so, he said, "How much does Rover cost?" And so, we went through this whole thing. And then he said, "Well, hey, it'd be cheaper for the city just to give Uber passes out to everybody. They'd be a whole lot, whole lot cheaper than running the service." And I'm not, I don't know who that was. So, I'm not advocating that. But the rest of us that go to Disney routinely, their internal bus system works like clockwork. And we could do something like that downtown for our business owners as we have those outside parking lots and be able to, you can look on your phone and be like, "Hey, Rover is, Rover's going to be at this spot in six minutes." So, that way, somebody who's clocking out could say, "Okay, I'm going to hop on the shuttle in six minutes."
Parking more, more accessible was, was part of that. The consensus building is going to take some work. We, we've got a parking customer that developed a routine and a lifestyle around how we are, how things work downtown today. And when we suggest shortening or lengthening or when we suggest parking fees or those sorts of things, the automatic response we get might be resistant. So, there's, there's a lot of work we got, excuse me, we, we need to do in the consensus building. The other thing is that the city does, we only control a portion of the available public parking spaces downtown. And I think in your packet today and in the previous study information, there's an inventory of who controls that parking. And so, the county, we, you know, we've got to get the county to the table. County's a little bit more challenging for us because it's not just the county mayor, it's the individual departments that operate their parking and they have designated parking. And so, managing through those opportunities to come up with, with a comprehensive downtown parking program, it's going to be worth the effort. But, but I guess what I'm suggesting to you is, it's going to take some effort to get the stakeholders on board, get the mayor and council and city administration on board with our approaches and also get the county and the individual parking lot owners on board with that. But, but I think we see this as such a critical issue for our community, especially for that downtown, to do what we want it to do, the vision that we've drafted, that we've got to pay attention to it now and we've got to do the heavy lifting now so that as that downtown parking demand grows, we'll be ready for it. And that is the purpose of this study.
Can we make the suggestion that a lot of this has been discussed with other groups, but maybe we need to have a, a public meeting to discuss downtown parking, invite all the stakeholders. That includes county government, business owners. Have that in the council chamber where people, and maybe have that opportunity where people can ask questions and then talk through it and come up with a game plan on what our next steps are going to be.
Certainly be glad to look at that. You see that as a, as a workshop style or do you see that as an open house style?
I mean, you're never going to get everyone to agree to not park in front of their business. So, it's going to have to be a consensus to where everyone's going to have to come, "Yeah, we don't like it, but this is probably what's best for..." I mean, I, I don't think it's right for governmental employees, and I include us in there, we don't, we collect taxes, we don't pay taxes. And so, those people who are paying rent and have services that they're delivering downtown, I don't think it's fair that governmental employees are taking up their spots in front of their businesses when they're paying taxes to the county and the city. That doesn't...
There, I'll quit parking down there. I'll quit parking on the square. No, I'm kidding.
I think, but at the same time, if you've got one use downtown that is a very high, intense use, it's not fair for that group to take up all the parking spots downtown. So, there's going to have to be some collaboration with everyone where everybody agrees.
And, and we're already funding the city and the county. We're already funding the operation and maintenance of a, of a 700-space parking garage. The county is a 39% participant in the operation and maintenance of that.
It's 31 and a half percent, 31 and a half percent.
31 and a half percent. So, the county, you know, they're already contributing to that, to that monthly cost of operating that, that parking garage. And I think, to me, when we hear that there is a parking problem downtown, what I think, what I hear them saying and what I've observed is, there's a parking crunch in the inner circle. But when we have 60% higher or higher vacancy in public parking spaces that are not inside that city circle, we don't have a shortage of parking. We have a shortage of utilization of, of all of the parking. And, and so, there's some opportunities for us there. But I, I, I think, Mayor, you're right on in that if the city government, county government are already funding a 700-space parking garage and there's vacancy in there, why not, why not direct our employees to use that?
Bill was too nice to say this when he was going to say, "What's next?" We get these studies and then it takes, we sit on them. And I say, "We" as a government, this is important. And I don't think we have the time to look at, yeah, I mean, we all know that we need a parking garage. But it would be nice to come up with a timeline that y'all tell us. Stakeholder meeting now to talk about the results that we got back. We're going to come up with some recommendations on, this is what we think needs to happen. Here's what the employees need to do. Here's what the county needs to do. Here's what the city needs to do. And come back with that recommendation and have that to us in 90 days on, here's our recommendations on what we're going to do. Is that fair, Bill?
Let me just say one more, one more thing that, that might help the process a little bit. I really believe this master planning, the wayfinding, is, is the key to open the door for this because it shows that we are making an investment in this bigger picture of navigating the downtown for visitors, for all of us to be. And it's, it's going to be a little money. But to have the master plan and actually get that in place before we do the public hearing so that we have something to present that the city is, is, you know, got some skin in the game as to what we're doing and we're doing this to make it, to understand and listen to what the problems are. Because quite honestly, I think what people, and by the way, there's not going to be a silver bullet. This thing is, we're going to have, as long as I've been in the downtown and as long as I've been in this community, parking in the downtown, we were 30,000 people, it was a problem. So, we're always going to have a problem, but actually keeping on trying so the public understands that we're, we're still trying to solve this problem. And in the long run, I think if they, if we have something to show them that this is the branding of how we're going to, what we're going to do, we have something to show the public that this is how we're going to apply this wayfinding in our downtown. And now, we're addressing some of the, some of your concerns about public parking using the city garage, you know, I mean, the new lights, the cameras, the access of safety, because that's what you're going to hear from people. They don't use, they don't use the garage because it doesn't feel safe. So, if we can make our investment on the front end and then use that opportunity of a public meeting to share what we've already done, you know, we've pushed the ball down a little bit and therefore, we, maybe some other things we could do. I think then's the time to have the public hearing or the open forum to explain what we've done. And because right now, I mean, I appreciate what y'all have done, but it's set the table. It hasn't really told us what we're going to do next. What are we going to do to address the problem? There's several opportunities to do in there, but we need to say, "What are we going to do?" And then when we bring that forward, then we've got actually the public, it's not just presenting the problem or we're not just pointing the finger at the public and saying, you know, "You county employees are the problem." Or, "You merchants that allow your employees to park in front of your business, you guys are the problem." How are we going to address some of the things that we can address? And then present that as, you know, the, the public meeting that we have or charrette or whatever, I don't know what we're going to call them, but the public meetings. I think that's the way I would proceed, is to get somebody to prepare a master plan for wayfinding in our downtown and then we have something to show. This is what we're going to do to navigate the downtown. And I, and I think there's businesses that do that. Like I say, I've, I've seen one. So, I know there may be others that are, that people, if we put out an RFP for wayfinding in our downtown, we might have others that would want to participate in that RFP. But I've already seen one that sounds, looks pretty good to me. So, anyway, that's, that's the way I would proceed.
And once we start to roll out with the plan, it'd be good to not have a commercial but on our cable channel constantly during the day, just have a little, short little excerpts of, "This is our new plan, this home parking." And, you know, people get familiar with it before they actually go in the environment, you know, just not a commercial, but little something explaining what we're getting ready to do new.
Yeah, public service announcement.
Yeah.
PSA is what we, what we generally ask City Three to do.
Okay, that's good. One last thing, if we can look at giving more consideration to the handicap, adding more spaces and possibly increasing the time, if we go with time parking for the handicap.
For handicap, there is no time limit on handicap spaces.
It's not now?
No.
Okay.
Regulated the same way as a public space.
Okay. That's good. And if we could get a couple of more, maybe.
Yes. I think, I think our challenge there is the, the physical needs of that because not every area, every sidewalk or every space is, is suitable for ADA, it doesn't meet ADA standards and so, we don't want to lead a, a person that may have some access limitations to a non-compliant area. So, it's, but I understand the, I understand the ask.
I think y'all see what we're talking about. This over the last couple of years, we're, we're ready to move along and do something to, Bill's right, there's not going to be a solution, but at least be able to provide some help to our small businesses downtown. And maybe part of that's just be happy to help with the conversation. Maybe part of that is to get with our governmental organizations that are downtown and real, because the one thing we're not including too is, there's typically once, well, there's an election every two years. When election time's going on, you're losing six to eight spots downtown, downtown just for, you know, elections. So, come back with us, to us on a timeline on what y'all, y'all want us to do and we can go from there.
Anything else for Mr. Judy?
Good stuff.
Thank you for the presentation today as well.
All right. Well, now move to the J. Percy Priest Reservoir Interlocal Agreement with CUD. Mr. Cor.
Oh, you're good. Mayor, thank you again, council. Exciting. We're going to talk about water today instead of trash, so. Excites everybody. If I can get this going up here. Real quick, and I know that you all haven't, some of you are familiar with our, I don't want to say struggles, but our, our challenges with the Corps of Engineers and J. Percy Priest over the past 20 years or so. This is just, I'm going to kind of give a 30,000-foot view and then dive down into the specifics. Be fairly quick. But we've got two major watersheds in the state of Tennessee. One is the Tennessee River, that's in green, and we're actually in the Cumberland River watershed in the purple there. J. Percy Priest is located in that location. If you look at the Cumberland River subwatersheds, that's the Stones River watershed right there. It's about five, almost, what is that, 590,000 acres in the watershed and the river's about 14,200 acres. The way that the dam works is there's a conservation pool and then there's a flood control pool. So, in the summer, there's 124,000 acre feet in the conservation pool. That's 40 billion gallons. We purchased in 2003, the city, 5,084 acre feet or 1.65 billion gallons inside that 124. That's 4%, just, just right at 4%. And so, the way the Corps operated was everything that we put back into the, to the lake from our wharf, our water resource recovery facility, we only got 4.1% credit. So, if we put 10 million gallons a day back into the lake, they only gave us $400,000 credit to our, to our water supply. And that, that's what really created the problem. So, in 2017, after 15 years of this, we basically got the Tennessee Code change that said, anything municipality puts back into the lake or the reservoir, we have, the state has primacy on this and we have exclusive rights and we should get 100% credit. So, if we put 10 million gallons a day back into the lake, we should get 10 million gallons a day of credit. So, since it was a states' right issue, the Corps blinked and actually they changed their accounting process. So, John Santamore used to tell me I was always tugging on Superman's cape trying to mess with the Corps, but we actually prevailed in that. It took us a decade, but we did. So, so the CUD interlocal agreement has, I give you that background because that's, that's, CUD also pools their water from the lake. So, this is about allocating some of the return flows back to CUD's water supply pool and also sharing some of Murfreesboro's. We've got some excess storage right now and CUD has a deficit. And how do we share those pools together? So, the first one involving the, the return flows, you all probably know and maybe not, but we, we have a distinct, Murfreesboro Water Resources just has a distinct water boundary. This dark green area, we were sued by CUD in the, in the 80s and we do not have, our water boundary has not grown in the past, you know, almost 40 years. You can see the, so as the Murfreesboro city limits and our sewer system grows, our waters, those, those people are served by CUD. They are CUD water customers. So, you can see there in growth boundary and in the CUD service area. So, we have a unique boundary and as growth occurs in the city currently, they're pretty much CUD water customers. We have, right now, the Murfreesboro Water Resources, we've got about 27,181 water and sewer customers. And then CUD actually serves about 25,300 water customers who, again, they bill sewer for us. So, every month, we get the, the revenues from the sewer, but they pay us that. So, that's, that's almost a 50-50 split. It's actually a 52%, 48% split in 2022. As we grow to 2030, it actually, CUD is going to be the 60% water provider for the city. So, we have to show, again, we're trying to give them credit for the return flows that their water... that their water customers send through our sewer system. I'll try to make, this is a little, little infographic, I guess. So if you've got two plants, the Murfreesboro plant and the CUD plant, we withdraw just over 14. We actually have about a 12% water loss. So we lose a couple of million gallons a day, just leaks and inefficiencies. All that goes back to the Murfreesboro Water Resource Recovery Facility. So 12.9 returns. Well, you can see, so what we're, what this interlocal agreement's doing is it's basically saying, hey, we're going to give 48% of that credit back to CUD, to credit in their water supply pool. 2030, it's the same situation. Now you're at 60-40. So it's a 10.6 credit to CUD, 7.1 to Murfreesboro Water Resources. The table is in the interlocal agreement. It changes each year between the 6.1 to the 10.6. So that's, that's, that's kind of the first item on the interlocal agreement. The second one is sharing the, the water storage supply. Real quick, I know this, this again is a simple, this is the dam and the lake. You've got a, a winter conservation pool that's 34,000 acre feet, about 11 billion gallons. You've got a summer pool. So you all know that in the summertime, right, they, they go up to elevation 490 and in the winter they drop it to 483 at the, the surface elevation of the lake because of, we have more flooding in the winter and they want the, the water level low so that it can absorb those flooding conditions. Takes 30-day fill period in March, April, and a 60-day release period where they drop it down. That's between, in September through October. This is the drought of record. Now, I don't, I, I know I get a little too technical here, but this is the summer pool period. And you can see the red line is where the actual water elevation of the lake occurred. Winter pool is down here. So the Corps started the accounting process at the end of March and they didn't complete the accounting period until the end of October, about seven months. And they were telling us that we needed to start withdrawing, you know, telling people to, we were at a water shortage, we were in a drought. Well, we weren't really in a drought. We just weren't at summer pool elevation. People were still skiing. And I told the Corps, I said, I'm not going to tell people to start rationing water when you still got people out here boating and recreating on the, on the, on the lake. 2012, we had something similar where we didn't make a summer pool. There wasn't any rain. It was a very, but right in middle of August, we had a huge rain event that just filled the lake up pretty quick. So that's about four and a half months of a, where they did not achieve summer pool elevation. So all that being said, that's how the Corps operates the lake. They say, hey, when you don't get to summer pool, we're in a water accounting period, a process. Currently, they show that the city has a 5.56 surplus. CUD has a 4.66 MGD deficit. And they've asked us to work out an agreement in this interlocal agreement that says when we're in these water storage accounting procedures, when we don't reach summer pool, that CUD and Murfreesboro share their pools together because together we've got enough water to satisfy the demands of, of the citizens, citizens of Murfreesboro. I know that's a long-winded way to say that's how we're looking at, at sharing the pool during the summer. But that's really it. Those are the two main elements in the ILA. We're not asking you to approve that today. I just wanted to give you the background and give you the understanding of what this interlocal agreement does. It really means that we're, we're giving CUD some credit on returns that their water customers are sending through our sewer system. And we are using our surplus during storage accounting procedures when they don't reach summer pool. We are sharing our, our water supply with CUD so that Murfreesboro residents don't, you know, there's, there's no restrictions placed on Murfreesboro residents. So I know, kind of complicated deal, but it's taken us 20 years to get here. But I wanted to kind of go through that with you. And I'm available for questions if you, if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Cor?
Good report, good report.
Thank you, Darren.
Much.
All right, we need to go to our fiscal year '24 budget discussion. Aaron.
I sent y'all the budget calendar last week and council priorities. I'm available if y'all have any questions about the calendar priorities. It's very similar to the same schedule we followed the last few years just to keep us in compliance with our charter and state deadlines. And I'm available for any questions or comments.
Aaron. All right, we'll move to the 2022 for December dashboard. Aaron, is there anything you want to highlight on the dashboard?
December's dashboard was still very similar to the previous months with our sales tax collections. I did, like Craig now, I think he shared with y'all that our January sales tax numbers that were for November receipts but that we received in January were down as compared to budget. So you'll see that reflected on next month's dashboard. We still showed growth over FY '22, but just not as much as budgeted. We budgeted 6% growth and our growth was closer to 1 or 1.1%. So that's, again, for November sales receipts. We'll see December sales receipts this month. And that'll give us, you know, another good indicator. But as of right now, we are seeing that decline in sales tax collections.
I don't see any board and commission appointments. I do want to let y'all know, see, coming through in the next couple of meetings, Bill will know this already, but George Huddleston had served on the airport commission for almost 30 years. And George, his term has run out. And George had said, when the, when the terminal got done, that he was, he was done. And so that, and then Butch Jones has been on the airport commission for eight years. His term's up. Butch didn't want to re-up. So I think we have two new, very qualified candidates that Chad has recommended. It'll be coming through. Charlie Myatt has been on the pension commission for 20-plus years. So Charlie has asked to come off. So you'll, that's a pretty specialized field to find a financier, a banker who wants to go on there. So if you have any suggestions, a gentleman named Justin Burris has applied. Justin is a, been a local banker for 20-plus years. And then lastly, it's not a standing commission, but if you'll remember, had put together some individuals to talk about the tennis issues and opportunities that, at ATC, we're meeting on Monday with staff. So you may see a recommendation coming up in the next month on, on tennis. Be patient as we work through that. Any other, I think we got a couple of other business items. That's all on here?
We have a statement for today. So we have an invoice from Davis Environmental Attorneys for $69,516.13 to be paid from the general fund, legal FY '23 operating budget. I believe council all got an email from the city attorney about this. If there are questions, you'll have to go into executive session.
Any questions?
Second.
Mr. Second, please call the row.
Ms. Agarwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. I have council communication on Murfreesboro City Schools. Do we need, is, was that just for information only?
That should have just been with the dashboard.
Any other business from staff? Any other business from council? All right, we've seen them, we'll stand adjourned.